I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
So I thank everybody for being here, uh, in person and online. Approval of the agenda. Been signing. And revision to agenda. We will add in the approval of the minutes first. The August 1st regular meeting and the August 8th, uh, special meeting minutes. If, uh, everybody's had a chance to go through those and read them.
I would move to approve both special minutes.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Further discussion? If not, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Now we'll approve the agenda.
So, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the addition of the minutes approval. Any further discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda is approved. Mr. Cummings.
Well, good evening, hello. Before I launch into my, uh, topic with the LEC, I wanted to introduce our new Assistant State's Attorney to you all. This is Ms. Megan Crosby. She started with us last Monday and we're very happy to have her on board. And hopefully she's, uh, not too overwhelmed yet, so. Uh, you may see her face around here or in the hallways, just say hello.
Welcome, Megan.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here and thank you for taking the job. Hope you enjoy our community.
All right, well, let's talk about some fun stuff. The document that you were provided in your packet for the LEC, uh, does not have any of my changes on it. This is the document, the draft that was provided by Howard Swanson to us. As a general note, Mr. Swanson does a lot of Trent Howard's agreements municipal representation. Him and I just have a little bit of differing approach. He likes to put things into documents one time. I am more a fan of the putting it in several times approach. And they're all clarify what I mean by that, but, um, a phrase he likes to use is, well, that's in there later. And I believe like, well, it would make sense to have a sentence here or a paragraph here in addition to it. So, that's the majority of the changes. What I would like to do tonight is outline some changes for you. Whatever you hold on, I will make the changes and do a markup copy for you. And that we can present that to Howard and the other legal representation. And should be pretty straightforward. Any questions before I dive into the deep end of the floor? Ready to go? Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much, Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Yaw.
Okay, so on page number one, at the very bottom, Article 2 is purposes of the LEC. The first and primary purpose is to obviously administer consolidated law enforcement and correctional facilities. But I do think there needs to be a paragraph added stating, um, the secondary purpose of the LEC is to hold a lot of real property, real estate. Because that has been such a big point of contention. But I think it needs to be addressed right on the front saying, less than we can hold our own property. There are some miscellaneous typos, spacing, commas, things like that on the next pages. The next major change I would recommend is on page number three. Paragraph 4.2. It's board membership and outlines the board of the LEC. It is my legal opinion that you should include another paragraph in there saying that the representative must be an elected official. That is how the public is able to hold not only our commission accountable, but also the boards and commissions that we sit on as commissioners. So if people don't like the way things are going at the LEC, their remedy is to have a talk with their elected official. I think that's a pretty straightforward change. On the flip side of that coin though, um, in the duties and responsibilities, um, title, starting on 4.8, there's a whole list of things that the LEC board, the LEC can do. And one of them is on page 5, 4817, create committees. I think we should have some specific language there saying that committees can be comprised of elected officials and members of the public. So it's not always the same three commissioners having to make the decisions. We can get people who are business leaders or specialists in a field or consultants to sit on committees for issues. And that gives some discretion to members of that LEC board, so we're not dying in your hands all the time. If that makes sense. Any questions about any of the changes I've proposed so far?
So, um, when you're talking about padding, 4.2, making sure that those people are elected officials.
Yep.
I understand that. I'm not a lawyer. But when it says representatives of the Ramsey County Commissioner, that will make some commission, isn't that? Are you just trying to make sure that what's clarified?
Yes. Correct. The term representative is a little bit ambiguous. Because you could say, oh.
You know, well, we can appoint somebody and they could be that representative of the commission today.
Gotcha. And that person is not accountable to anybody, right? They, they do something, you know, like, I guess in theory, the commission can take them off, but I, I just think it's.
No, I.
So basically, every, on the board would be commission. And then if you have a committee, that's what you would.
That, exactly.
That way you could still have some leeway and have a committee that are not on the group.
Exactly, so like, um, let's say you want to form a committee about grounds and, uh, facilities or something like that. Well, maybe that doesn't need to be a commissioner from every county doing that. Maybe it could be somebody who is just interested in doing that. Maybe it can be the director and somebody else and somebody else.
Right.
So the committee.
Essentially, they're gonna bring it back to the commissioner.
Correct. They'll bring it back to the board. So if you have some flexibility on committees, the board is more restricted. On page 5, 4818, it's the third paragraph on the bottom. Sell, convey, lease, exchange, transfer, otherwise dispose of property and assets. I think we need to clarify that real property or real estate and not just, you know, the desks and the pens and things like that. You can hold real estate, you can acquire real estate, sell real estate that is owned by the LEC. And then that gives us the ability to do the deed to the LEC like we had talked about at previous meetings. So just kind of clarifies again. Just trying to squeeze out all the ambiguity I can get out of there. I want it to be as clear as possible. Questions about that one? Next is Article 6. On page 6, specifically, um, page, or 613, it says pay all charges, surcharges, or fees allocated to the member. I believe that it would be in the county's interest to include penalties and interest in that list of, um, things that people have to pay. You don't want a member coming back later and say, oh yeah, I'll pay my charges, but those penalties and interests you assessed me, I'm not gonna pay those. Another discussion that was had between me and my team is, should there be a restriction saying you have to pay your bill within so many days of receiving it? I don't know if you want some language like that included, but the example would be if you get the bill on January 1, you have to pay that bill for the services, charges, surcharges within 90 days of receiving it. So that's something for you all to consider if you want language like that. I'm looking for direction there.
One of the things that you could do for handling manner would be, um, exclude that member from voting. You know, that they may sit on that board, but they wouldn't have a vote until their fees are paid and told.
So that, um, that is included later on. There is a. So sorry, I can't remember the paragraph off the top of my head, but there's a, it basically says.
I must have been where I got the idea.
Here it is on page 11. If you're three months delinquent, you don't get to vote. If you're six months delinquent, you don't get to use the facility. If you're a year or more delinquent, you, it's deemed that you've withdrawn.
Okay.
So I think that would make sense, they'll just have a 90 day.
And if you didn't have a 90 days or a penalty, or would you put a penalty or?
Well, it's on, I mean, penalties are already, kind of there.
Oh yeah, the penalty is, you won't give them.
Yeah. But it doesn't say, I think you have to have somewhere in there that says that you have to pay your bill by 90 days otherwise. Just for that.
I guess the thinking there is just to ensure that all the entities involved are paying the bills on time, including us. 616, if you adopted that change to have, um, only commissioners on the board, we tweak that language a little bit there. Page 7, there's just some miscellaneous typos that I would fix. The next major that I have is 8.1 on page 8. Goes hand in hand with 844 on the following page. One thing that we talked about was deficit spending, how that process works, and how that process is then assessed back to the counties. Uh, I know that you can't always anticipate a deficit. But if we were contemplating some language that we thought like, what am I trying to say here? You don't want the LEC to come to you in October and say, we've already burned through your, years worth of funds. Right, give us more money. We understand that the cost of incarceration is always changing. The amount of people we have in is always changing. Sometimes we have more people than anticipated, but, you know, should there be some sort of cap on the deficit spending? Or do we want to leave that to the director and the board and not either? So I would be looking through some input there.
I certainly don't like the idea of deficit spending or deficit budgeting, you know, sticking within that budget. You know, and within this, we set our incarceration costs or the, the fees that we pay per diem, per day kind of thing. Um, and part of our budget is, um, expected or average number of days. Um, sometimes we meet that, sometimes we exceed that. I can't remember if we have exceeded what's been budgeted lately. So, which has been good, you know, it just shows up bad on our budget books when, you know, we, you know, the county gets this huge budget bill, we have to budget for it, but we don't find those number of inmates and, and, um, you know, that we're, we're paying for, so.
And like I said, the difficult part is, you never know who's gonna come through the door, right? You might have a busy weekend where you pick up 24 people in the county at some, you know, I'm trying to think of something ridiculous, grave robbing party or something, okay? You don't know who's gonna come through it, so it might spike your numbers, but, um, I don't want to get too much into the weeds, but maybe that is something that could be included in the director's budget, this some sort of contingency fund or cushion. Maybe it is, I don't know, but, um, if you look at 844 on page 9, it's kind of a blank check. It says the LEC can impose surcharges or additional charges or fees on the members. Well, okay, yes, I, I, we understand the need to do that if there's a deficit, but also at what rate, at what dollar, does that need to be set? You know? So it's not one entity being $600,000, another entity being $5,000 or something lopsided like that. One possible workaround would be high percentage of use. So if there's a deficit and you're, we're over, you use 60% of the facility. You should pay 60% of the bill. That's not necessarily in our interest because we are the primary user of the facility as Ramsey County District Court.
Is that ever happened yet?
What's that?
Well, I mean, I can see, as far as the inmate thing, that comes back to the county, so that's in our mind. But as far as shortcomings that have to be passed on to the group that's not related to any inmates, I mean.
Well, I think there's been some capital improvements that's been necessary, whether it be security or, um, I'm trying to think what the other one was, Rob, that.
Writing.
Writing.
Writing, um, that, that came back that we.
That was for an inspection or something like that.
Yeah, you know, based upon something that, you know, came up unexpectedly, that wasn't budgeted, that needed to be corrected today and not wait for the next budget cycle. And then it was spread out amongst the member entities based on percentage of, of usage, like Boa stating.
Recycle, recycle, recycle.
And I think having the ability to operate as, you know, their own entity and going out and taking out maybe a operating one if something like that were to happen. And, you know, then evenly spread it out or spread it out the following budget year with the, the parties that are members based on percentages. But to be able to stay, you know, come in like Boa stating at the end of the year or halfway through the year and all of a sudden need more operating money. I think that's where that, that problem comes in is, you know, encouraged to stay within budgets that they set forth early on and, you know, are approved by their member political subdivisions, each of the counties.
And I should clarify, in no way is this a knock on, on the accountants and the finance department at the LEC. They did an excellent job. It's just one of those things that, you know, when you look through an agreement and you think, I don't want to give somebody a blank check to just keep spending, spending, spending taxpayers' resources, right? On the flip side of that coin, once you hit your cap and there's no more deficit spending, are you allowed to continue to bring people into the facility? You know what I mean? So that's a hard decision that you'll have to address how you see fit. On page 9, under 8.3, it's capital assets and equipment acquisition. I believe there should be a paragraph on real estate or real property. You know, maybe the LEC wants to look down the road and, you know, are planning to build a new facility in 40 or 50 years. And they want to buy a parcel out in a field somewhere. Well, they should have the ability to go out and purchase that parcel and hold on to it if they want to. Is my opinion. So I think it would be nice to just have that power right there listed. Questions about that one at all? Page 10, withdrawal or termination of membership in 11.1. Does a really nice job of laying out the notice and how notice is to be given. In the second line, it says that you shall serve notice on the chair or director. I think that should say, and, I think you, not only the director who's managing the day to day, but also the chair of the board who is making the decisions need to be notified. It's an easy change. And truthfully, if you're filing notice on somebody, it's just one more piece of paper, right? So. Page 11, there are just some miscellaneous grammatical things I'd like to take care of. And then the final page, page 13. Article 22, termination of previous agreements. The paragraph does a nice job of laying out that all these miscellaneous agreements and parts of agreements are gonna be basically put to bed. But I think we just need a little bit of extra language in there. Because I think some of them have different names like codicils and addendums and things like that. So I just want to make sure we're getting them all and not just some of them, you know? I would hate for a new agreement to come through and then somebody to come back and say, oh yeah, but this addendum from 1986 wasn't covered, so we can still operate under this. And then the last thing, Article 25, counterparts. This is just a picky thing, but that also, I think you should say, uh, maybe accident, you didn't, counterparts also known as duplicate originals. Wait, so there's no, you don't have to be a lawyer to read the contract per se. So those are the changes I would recommend. If you'd like me to do those, I would need a motion, put them together and submit it to the other interested parties. Don't want more time to think about it. There's things that you want me to add or things that need to be in there, something more.
Comments, questions?
So do you have an idea of that cap on the deficit spending or do you want to input that now?
Input would be nice. I, I don't exactly know how to put the language that would be necessary, but, I mean, I think it's gotta come down to some sort of notice, right? You gotta, or they probably have some sort of cushion there for them to use in the event of a deficit. I'm hesitant to say cut a one-time check of $100 or, or put a dollar number on it, but maybe that's something that the director and the accountants at the LEC can help. Maybe create some sort of contingent fund or something like that that can be used. And maybe it already exists, maybe I'm making a mountain out of a wall hill.
You know, I think now that, if it happens now, they come to the commission or they go to the board and the board will pass the commission across the. You know how you gotta do it before, Rob? If you needed that lighting, you could just go fix it. Yeah, it might have been a, a contact, hey, we gotta do this, we've got so much time. This is what it is.
Yeah.
Special meeting or whatever to.
We've been.
Maybe just go spend the money.
Correct, correct.
Correct. But I think that's because the board probably holds to do that also. Not just giving a free check for it either.
Correct. And, and I think there've been, you know, there are reasonable asks for those improvements. It's not like, let's put in a parking garage or something crazy on, you know?
Some of the asks are to keep the doors open because they got run up. It wasn't really like, even a half, it was something they had to have.
Exactly.
Toes out policy if you have them. I mean, is there a written policy?
Unexpenditures?
Yeah, in an emergency case like that, that goes to the board and then each member goes to their commission.
Well, there's certain dollar, dollar amount thresholds, you know, because day-to-day expenses are obviously paid for, but every bill has to be run through the LEC board, um, before it's, it's purchased and just like anything else, it has to be get out or, you know, certainly if, you know, the, the roof falls in or something like that, that's a different story that, you know, but obviously something significant like that, we'd be involved with and hands-on already, so.
I don't remember a formal policy, but $5,000 was still there.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe, who are we to address this? Maybe we just add a paragraph saying capital improvements right into the agreement, you know? There's capital improvements or urgency expenditures.
That's what got us in trouble the last time was there is that thing that hung over the head of, you know, that, well, you can't do capital improvements without the approval of the.
Opposed gates.
Yep, so that was one of the things that they were trying to avoid, um, having to jump through hoops in order to do any improvements. So I think, you know, sticking with the budget or, you know, here's our budget and this is what it is and, and not deficit spend would be, you know.
Try to keep it in. But if they're, if they're gonna plan for something like that.
I'm not sure how you word that either, you know, um.
So. If, if, once this is signed, the LEC will have. Go on its own property, okay?
We're gonna do it simultaneously, right? At the same time. At the same time, that's the rule.
So to me, to me, the LEC board, you know, will be governing a physical asset. And something like an inspection pops up, you know, that shows value, you know, and you you need ten thousand dollars worth of lighting or something. Then I think the operating loan would address that. Because you'd have that capability to get an operating loan or an emergency loan for, you know, because obviously if they know the doors are bad and the cell block, whatever, that's gonna be a budget item. But if the DOC comes in and says, oh, you gotta fix this, I think.
And you've got a window.
And you've got a window that I would think as long as the board okay's the operating loan or the emergency operating loan. Then that would be addressed in the next year's budget process. Does that make sense, what's going on?
Yeah, allow them to to incur a loan and then budget for it the following year.
Right, that way during that process, then when you're doing your budget process, they, you know, however normally is operated on, they need to apotify that. That's up to that board, we have our department to be on that board. So I don't know how, if this is answering your question or not.
Well, it's good input. Just trying to get away from the redundancy.
Well, instead of trying to end up, you know, trying to put a percentage or a financial number on deficit spending. To me, the operating loan for an emergency would take care of it. Because it's gonna move into the regular budget process the following year.
Again, I think we only tend to hear of grantee management on an emergency. Otherwise, it's gonna be budget.
Right.
Right, right, Rob? It's gotta be budget unless there was an emergency purpose.
As much as they're getting inspected, there shouldn't be any big surprise. You know, there shouldn't be any big surprise expenditures and the only other thing would be some kind of job trying to drag through the building or some physical capacity.
Yeah, something like that would be in terms of, you would probably go get the loan to do it in terms of.
Right, but I mean, once, once the LEC board has that authority to, you know, they're gonna have a physical asset that they can leverage.
To operate as their own entity.
Right, you know, that way I, I don't know how technical you would have to actually get done that.
So if I, if I'm understanding you correctly. Instead of setting a specific rate or percentage. You'd like to see some language authorizing them or giving them the power to go out and get an operating loan, which.
Right, and then the procedure would be to, whatever that problem was, to come back in the next budget cycle.
Right.
Budget the money to pay off that loan or whatever the case may be.
Sure, I can probably come up with something for that. Or maybe they have so much time, they're actually, they're able to pay for it.
Well, you know.
Ain't going away.
I like it with the recommended changes that that Bo was suggesting. I think it sounds good, it looks good.
Once you make the changes, we'll re-go through it. And give a second step. So far, I don't know where the first permission to review or to take some sort of action on the agreement, so.
I I do think that Benson approved the draft.
As written.
As written.
Sure.
So as much as I'd like to take credit for being first.
Second.
Second is not bad either, so. There, there was a lot of work involved with this and I wanna thank Bo and his staff and Star and their staff and and all that for going through this and Howard and and everybody else that was involved in it, I think it started three or four years ago and maybe even longer. So it's been a process that's been ongoing and hopefully we can put this into bed within the next couple of weeks.
I'll make a motion that we approve what Bo's recommendation. I'll start in that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Motion in a sec, second to go ahead and allow State's Attorney Cummings to go ahead with the changes that he outlined with the LEC Lake Region Law Enforcement Center Joint Callers Agreement. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
So just, just to clarify, I'm gonna make you what's what I call a Christmas tree. So the thing I'm taking out will be in red, the things I'm adding will be in green, and I'm gonna call it draft two, so.
You, you spent some time with legislative management, didn't you?
Yes, sir. They did, but it's time to make parole.
Well, we appreciate that, so it makes things, makes things easier to identify where the changes are. So. Anything else?
I'll, I'll work on it and I'll send the copy to Candy when it's done and I'm sure you'll see me again soon.
Thank you, appreciate your time, Bo. Mr. Fieldson.
Yes. All right, start out with the projects that we're doing right now. Favorite patches, nothing's changed there, they haven't started on them or anything yet, so. Bridging culvert work, that is done now, for the big culverts anyway. We're still working on some smaller ones with our own equipment. Put the Ransley in the back to Iron High. Uh, any questions on that? And then the gravel projects, they did start on those, they got seven eighty west of Brockett that is done now. Seven C goes east of Brockett and they're, I don't know if they finished that today, but they're close. Then they'll start on B D east of Lot. And then just keep running going right online there. Any questions there? One other thing, Paul had sent me, Paul Norenson had sent me an email saying that Gladden isn't gonna start working on the box culvert until the beginning of October. Because the concrete boxes won't be made until it. So the date that the box is being made is October sixth, so probably about a week before that, they'll be.
That's up on Ramsey four?
Yep. Yeah, Gladden is the company that's working on that. So again, I don't know where Harvest fits into that schedule, but just saying all those starting first week October now. Any questions there? Okay, we have a outstanding invoice from the DOT in May that got lost on my desk, imagine that. Anyway, I told them I would bring it up at this meeting, see if we could get it paid. It's for the final payment of our paving project in Hampton. Total bill is three thousand one hundred and six dollars and eighty-two cents. And I guess I'm looking for a motion to pay that bill. Motion to pay the bill.
Set him.
Motion in a second to go ahead and pay the remaining bill to DOT thirty-one oh six eighty-two. Further questions? If not, roll call, please.
Will, tell me.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Book.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Aye. And of course, well, with that, we have the signature page for this certificate letter stating where we got our local maps from. And that has to be signed by the auditor and the chairman. So I'd like a motion for the auditor and the chairman to sign that certification letter, so.
Motion in a second to go ahead and have auditor and chairman sign the certification letter indicating where the payments or the funds are coming from. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Um, then our inventory, our shop of culverts is starting to get low, so I need to order some culverts for inventory. It's actually a pretty good, pretty big order, so the cost of that's gonna be forty-five thousand fifty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. And that, a big, eighty-five percent of that is in and out, in other words, we sell them back and we get the money back. But I'm looking for a motion to go ahead and order those culverts.
So. Set him.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead and order culverts for inventory, forty-five oh, forty-five thousand fifty-three dollars twenty-four cents. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
One other thing, Dylan approached me about the bike path out in Lakewood. And, um, just doing some work of what we've done in the past, in two thousand and two. We get a three-quarter inch overlay, in other words, we put a thin lift of asphalt on top of it. And then thirteen, we, twenty thirteen, we sealed it and bog sealed it and crack sealed it. And that costs twenty-five thousand and Creole Township helped pay for half of that, so. My, my thought here was I gotta put it in my budget for twenty-four. So I don't know if we need to, it needs to be done again, put it that way. So I don't know if we all wanna do it next year or this year or in twenty-five. I kinda glanced at it, I didn't get a bucket, but it does need to be sealed again. Probably doesn't need another overlay. I'm guessing with inflation and everything, it's gonna cost around fifty thousand. And I didn't put a budget for it yet this year.
And that's just a portion of the bike path going south of Town to the country code there?
Yep, starting kinda at the church.
Kinda at the church river life through that way.
Yep, yeah. So about three miles, not quite two.
You said the township helped though last time?
Last time, they picked it up, yes.
Would that something you wanna ask them again or?
Yeah, I will, but I guess if we're waiting till twenty-five, I would wait to ask, but their board might change type of thing, you know?
But then they could budget it also.
True, yes. So that's just a heads up more than anything, which we do need to do something with that bike path to preserve it, so. Kinda keep that in mind. I did talk to the city today to see if they're doing any maintenance on any of their bike paths and they don't have anything in plan, in works or plans for the next two years, so. We can't piggyback or try to get the same contractor.
And when are they looking at doing it, a couple of years?
Nothing, they'll put in the next few years.
Okay.
For the city, but so we can be on our own, well, we'd be on our own anyway, but probably get a better price if we could.
Piggyback with another, with the same contractor. Okay.
That's all I have unless somebody's got something for me.
Was there any, um, what were we doing, remind me on that, um, bridge that DOT reduced that speed on and they didn't approve it in Morrison Township?
They reduced the weight on.
Weight, reduced the weight.
On the Haiti Bridge, yep.
On the Haiti Bridge.
We kinda looked at what the inspectorate said and there's a bunch of, it's a completely wooden bridge, everything wooden. And it's got some cracks in the, in some of the beams and some dirt's washed out way up underneath the, I mean, at the end of the head walls, on the backside of the head walls. A lot of, lot of little things that add up to a lot of big things. So there's no easy quick fix to make that a heavier weight. And we put it for replacement last fall and got denied on the federal system, state and federal.
But everybody's aware of it and using alternative routes with heavier equipment and, you know, it's worth presuming.
Yeah, the people at Firehouse there know about it. It's signed.
It's signed, okay. Any hopes of getting that approved for federal funding or DOT funding?
Yeah, you know, every year we have a better chance, just 'cause the ones that are worse at it are being done.
Yep.
Across the state, so. Hopefully. It makes a big difference on if it's a bus route, a mail route, how far the detours are and all that stuff, so.
Sure. Anybody else have anything for Kevin?
Get this here.
Thank you, Kevin.
Oh, I did get hired, a person hired for Spark Brother, they start first in September.
Next item on our agenda is, no doubt you have my agenda. Unfinished business software contracts. Vanguard, Eagle Video, API and Tyler Technologies. Who wants to go first?
I can talk about Vanguard. I, I guess I wasn't exactly sure what you needed tonight, but I did send you the email of what they had, the charges and information. And it gets from there to get questions.
And that was something that Bob had indicated in his communication that they would do following pictometry, correct? And pictometry wasn't gonna be able to start till next spring or
I believe.
Early spring, was that it, Steve?
Yeah, before late fall.
Right, can't do it in the summer because of foliage and we need to do it in the spring when it bleeds on and then city is gonna do it regardless, is that correct, Rob?
Yes, so after the demo, we, we explored, talking to them to see what it would take for us to do it on our own. Uh, and they indicated that, you know, we wanna work with the county, we'd rather go with the county department of that, but just in case the county didn't move forward and they indicated that the minimum that they would do was a fifty square on a three-inch fly for twenty dollars. So, uh, that's, we know that we could get that if we need to on our own. So one way or the other, we're gonna move forward. Moving with the county, we were able to expand our zone. You know, initially we had found like forty-two square that we're looking at, we've done it up to seventy-one. Uh, and with a little bit of additional expense, we're good with that.
So when you're talking seventy-one square, that has you paying how much?
Uh, twenty-five five.
And Vanguard was almost for the, which that's Vanguard.
Uh, no, pictometry and country, that's.
Steve, what was that kind of money for?
The total was one seventy-eight, two?
One seventy-two, two seventy-three.
And this would just be awarding the contract and not paying the bill and and the money's coming out of somebody's budget? Or we're gonna take that out of excess? Or we're gonna take that out of excess?
Was that gonna come off? Cash and CD?
Cash and then CDs?
So that we could just pay for?
Instead of trying to budget it out for a three-year commitment, we could take it out of CDs and pay for it that way, committing to the contract. And pictometry, the Eagleview, Steve, was
the total is one seventy-two, two seventy-three of cities. But the county portion would be one forty-six, seven thirteen. Point zero five. Make a motion that we accept, uh, need for Eagleview. Just our fourth rate, and then Eagleview for Vanguard, I think, I'll make a motion that we accept the Eagleview's proposal. I will second that.
Motion in a second that we go ahead and accept the proposal from Eagleview. Any further discussion?
This is doing the same as the city fifty per square.
So we're, we're doing a three-inch resolution, we should have found seventy-one of the square miles.
Or six inch for the twelve-hundred-and-twenty-nine square.
We didn't feel that we needed the, that high of a resolution, correct?
Right, that's three times as much.
Three times as much.
Three inch.
Okay.
Six inch.
Further discussion? On the motion to pass on the Eagleview pictometry contract? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And that would lead us to the Vanguard. Appraisal Software Updates Contract. And why am I not seeing that online? James, you know.
I sent you that's an email.
Hmm, hmm.
Couldn't get it sent.
So total would be, uh, residential parcels with improvements and residential parcels with land. Total cost would be one forty-three, zero fifty-five. And kind of went through that. Those costs, um, that sound about right, Beth?
Yes.
Would we use CD money for this as well?
Yes.
Yep.
And this is a hundred percent, right? This is not leaving anything out away.
These are the residential parcels, yeah, and like it says in there, it would fluctuate based on the final count of parcels. We'll work to combine as many properties as we can, where there's maybe a house with a vacant lot next to it, same owner, something like that, so make it all work out.
I still don't leave anything out, and then all of a sudden we're.
Right, you know, if you read at the bottom of the email, you know, where they talked about, um, the flagging properties, where if they were to come in and review them, it would be two hundred dollars an hour, but that's something our office could do. Just be going out and measuring or taking portals or whatever's needed. Um, the other thing is, uh, they have where, um, at the end of the project, before our tax utilization meetings, we do have the ability to hire them to come in and conduct a meeting with people if they have complaints, but it's something like, when with the commercial evaluation, I just spearheaded it, they contacted me first, if I could make it work out, it wasn't a problem. Uh, but we would have access to them, which would be an additional cost, if they had to like come here for our county commission meeting or our state or county meeting or something like that. But today too, with technology, I would hope that maybe that people needed to resume and some of their teams, something like that too, if it wasn't, but those are the only things that would be down involved that.
Hundred and forty-three thousand, I hope they can come up in person.
And they normally do, I only brought that up because it was COVID when we did the last one, so that's how it had to occur.
Right.
And I know I just said it last week at the state tax utilization meeting, Bob stood up and represented a county there that had some issues with some of the properties. And he's there every, every year, so they do, um, back everybody up and help them out as best they can.
But I, I think what we'll find, you know, similar with our commercial, uh, revaluations that Vanguard helped us with was that everybody was treated fairly, that it was an outside entity looking at it. And, you know, there were some that were undervalued, some overvalued, and everybody was put on an equal playing field. And, uh, you know, it came out to be a, a fair, fair way of doing things, you know, you have that outside tool in your toolbox that's able to take a, a different look at it and that's what they do. And pictometry will give them that, that added sense of, of, uh, new liability and accuracy, and so everybody's on the, on the same playing field.
Make a motion, we accept the Vanguard.
Second that.
Been moved in second that we go ahead and accept the proposal from Vanguard. And, uh, again with that one, taking the money out of the existing CDs that the county has. Further discussion? Do we think we need to get precise with the full residential parcels with improvements, residential parcels with land only, do everything together? And, um, or did you want it separated? I know Bob's got two different prices in there. You want it together, correct?
Yeah, I think together would be fine.
Yep, okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Beth, for coming on. Appreciate it. Thank you, Rob. Uh, EPI, um, so the cost for the proposal that we have for EPI, I think that's under the commission rooms. The meeting room enhancements that we had discussed, um, previously with Steve and, um, representatives from EPI. And I think the charge of the total was, um, was that that sixty-four, eight thirty-six, Steve?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Um, sixty-four, eight thirty-six. I'm trying to remember if that was just for
There was just the meeting room.
And this room here, or was that the equipment for downstairs too, wasn't it? The EPI cart? Is it your recommendation, Steve, that we go, go with all that they're recommending, or did you have some other recommendations that we should look at?
I guess that's up to you. The cart, I think, is.
Do you think that cart is adequate for downstairs? Will it be secure and safe and easily operated for the layperson coming in, so you don't have to?
I think so, and it would be kept in the emergency manager's office, but not in use. Would have to be requested, I guess, but.
Sure.
Using it.
Because that was one of the concerns that we, we had early on with some of the other equipment that when it was portable and and, uh, checked out by the layperson, that sometimes difficulty connecting or, um, getting properly operated. But I would assume that very normal business hours, you'd be here. Or we'd have people on staff that would be available to connect.
Yeah, I think. And it should be fairly user-friendly, but more so than trying to hook a laptop up to their TV every time or if it's all contained in one thing, it should be.
And I think with similar type of entities, or depending on the entity or who's operating the door, renting the room, would could be an additional fee if there was a non-governmental entity that wanted, was requiring it or asking for it. So similar to, you know, what we're doing with rental of the memorial building or things over in that area, but I don't see a lot of requests for that happening here. You know, normally it's a government entity that's usually utilizing the facilities, so. Okay. And then there was another, um, separate bid that we got, or Steve had gotten from EPI, something that and we had overlooked was the armory EPI quote. And I think I think this is just for, um, getting back on a service contract for the existing equipment that's currently there, is that correct? Correcting the, the software, the firmware, making sure that that's usable and connectable to the state system that is utilized that that we go through. And that was for a cost of three thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. One of the things that wasn't on any of these bids and, and something that that we had looked at when Steve, uh, Steve Butts from EPI came up here was somehow enhancing the audiovisual capabilities within that armory as well, whether it be a brighter screen or other additional screens further to the back. So if you had a, a larger meeting, that, um, people would have the ability to view those, um, without having to look at that screen that's so far away. Um, because that is quite a long room, and if you're sitting back of that room, um, and the, given the light that's represented in that room, sometimes it can be difficult to to see and get a projector, that would be great enough to display that, would be incredibly expensive. I mean, because you could do an entire wall of LED screens and make it extremely bright and, but you're looking at, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars for a screen, so. So that's something that we could work on later on as we move forward with that, but certainly somebody thought about pull-out screens halfway out that would, um, project what's being projected up front towards the back of the room. Or, um, other suggestions could have been, uh, flip-down monitors, flip them down from the ceiling, so they're out of the way for everyday normal use of the room without having audiovisual stuff, but having still that ability to be able to to see what's being presented up front, further to the back. So, but the thirty-six, thirty-nine would just be for software enhancements to the system that's already existing over there. And a maintenance agreement, is that correct, Steve? Or was that just the?
Yeah, I guess.
Oh, yeah, support, equipment and support.
But then, it'll be, to keep it up to date, but.
Would be ongoing maintenance.
But that's.
Right.
A couple hundred a year, I guess.
So.
Yeah, presently that room is very usable, but being able to be part of the presentation is very difficult. If you're halfway back and what.
Right.
Roundup was a really good example of that.
Yep. And that's where some of these suggestions came in from was, was people that attended Roundup that provided comments and suggestions, um, for that and they, you know, years back and through the years, there's been some significant, um, dollars spent through, whether it be through county or through NDSU or a combination of both for some of that equipment in there. It's a shame that it's, um, we can't properly utilize it to its potential, so I think the thirty-six, thirty-nine is a good starting point to that, and maybe that's something that we can contact EPI about this, remind them of the other enhancements to the visual, um, capabilities of that room. Now, do we want to look at the quote from EPI for this particular room and the capabilities that, um, could potentially have in here for audiovisual enhancements?
And this money come from the CD again? No.
Yep. So it's not a budgeted item, it's not a, but it's something that's been saved over the years and and should be able to use some of that savings for some of these building improvements, capital improvements that the county is looking to make. Butts? Sitting around the table, it's pretty easy for us to see and hear one another. If we did have to do things remotely or somebody's watching currently on YouTube, then they hear everything that's being talked about and discussed and so it'd just be some of those enhancements and then different screens, different cameras on that back wall and. And was it something up here as well, wasn't there, Steve, or was it an enhancement?
Maybe another TV up front.
Right.
I did tell Jeff that the last Mountain Lakes meeting, I was at the Candy in the commission room, but they put a new system in there, and I got a lot of that with some people were talking and you could hear, I could hear, being the more heart of hearing, that was, it was pretty amazing when they had.
Commissioner, thoughts?
I would say being the most heart of hearing here, I would make a motion that we proceed with that. Two different physically have to enhance our.
Audiovisual enhancements for the commission room.
And downstairs.
Downstairs and the armor.
And the updated armor. One second. It's the time we live in, so we gotta.
Yep.
You have a choice, but we don't have a choice. That's the one that gets cute more than most of the time at home anyway.
Well, we all get accused of that, so you're not alone. So we have a motion a second to go ahead and approve the bids from AVI for the improvements in the commission meeting room, the enhancements to the equipment in the rooms downstairs with the council, the cart, and then the enhancements to the armory. Further discussion, questions? Motion to proceed has been moved in seconded, no further discussion in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. So thank you, Steve, for putting that together, and we'll get that signed and sent over to Mr. Butts, that we're at AVI and Duncan for his, Kevin's engineer for working on that. With that, we can move on to new business.
Tyler Technology.
Oh, Tyler, yep. The big one. The big one. So what I did is I printed out the cost page. I think there was four or five of those and. I think Tyler Technology is kind of joking with Bo that reason they're so expensive is they have so many attorneys, because who else comes up with an eighty-seven-page contract for software? So this is replacing the Dakota Program's accounting, payroll. Taxing ties in with Vanguard. It is, and they have a lot of different modules, and this is, is this the modules that we need or is it all of them together?
It's, some I've eliminated already prior to this, but.
Okay.
Once we see what, what's all there and what we need and what we don't need.
So was there two totals? Or was it just?
I think those ones listed for lower option.
So I have the one sixty-one, six ninety.
Hundred and nineteen, six.
I must have messed up page.
Page seventeen.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, one nineteen, six hundred.
So this is your worst-case scenario, some of these optional ones may or may not be here once you get, dive into it?
Yep. And it pretty much speaks for all of it, because I haven't.
There's a lot that you don't know yet.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, just, just from them asking me questions of what we currently have, she kind of went off of that, but.
So Candy, is this what the other county is already? The other county?
There's, there's a lot of counties that are currently using Tyler.
Yes.
Now.
Now.
And so if you recall, I think it was in July, we had given permission for the departments to be closed on first floor, so they could go down and, and take a look at Tyler Technologies being operated down in Grand Forks County. And so they spent the day down there reviewing their operations and what it can do for them, what it does for them. And I think they all came back very impressed with the capabilities of.
Crazy.
I will make a motion that we move forward with the Tyler Technologies. Second motion.
Okay. Motion in a second that we go ahead with moving forward with the Tyler Technologies proposal. Any further discussion?
So let's go about what we have.
Well, currently.
Two eighty-one, two ninety.
Two eighty-one, two ninety.
I have that written there somewhere, just in my desk.
And that was on page seventeen of the proposal.
The biggest reason we're doing this is because Candy, the biggest reason we're doing this is because what we have is going away here.
Yeah, they don't have a choice.
Yeah.
Basically, what company are you gonna pick?
And it just makes sense to use what, hardly the vast majority of counties in the state are using.
Well, you.
Not only did you get Tyler's support, but you get the support of others that are utilizing it.
You call somebody in another county, and you're both can look at the same thing.
Yeah.
And it tied in. Pretty sure.
I don't know if we talked about it. It could be.
Yeah, it's, I read that.
Oh, Vanguard interface, yeah.
Yeah, Vanguard interface was in that included in that. So.
I'm hoping that. The updated version will take. Steve, what was our discussion about taking less brain power or less thinking to try to do certain things that it'll just be right in front of us instead of, yeah. You know? Because he, you know.
And when will all this be implemented? Do they have a timeline?
When I spoke with her last week, July of twenty twenty-four.
There.
And that might be pushed back a little bit. I don't know how many other counties have jumped on board since. So. Yes. And, and, you know, the, the gentleman that we have the teams meeting with, I mean, he's very nice, the lady that I've spoken, I mean, I've only spoken with her on the phone, and she's, you know. I didn't feel like we were just a number, you know, that she, you know.
Yeah, and again, will we, will utilize CD options for this?
Yes.
So.
And right now.
Yep. Two eighty-one, two ninety. And we have a motion in a second on the table. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we can go on to new business, correct? So, thanks, Steve. New business, we have the Devil's Lake Basin Water Stewardship Award. That's something that the basin gives out, has since two thousand and two. And I think within your packets, there's award nomination criteria, award nomination form, and then the news release sent out to news media, county commissions, and our CS offices, extension offices, the whole gamut within the basin, trying to get a nominee for the Water Stewardship Award, will hand that out at the State Water Convention in Bismarck at their awards banquet. And I think that's the eighth of December, or the seventh of December. I'm gonna remember. But anyway, looking for nominations, if you have an idea of an individual, a group, or a project that would qualify, you can get ahold of me or one of the Water Resource Board members and let them know when we can get that filled out and submitted. Due Tuesday, October thirty-first, Halloween, by the end of business dates. Other one we have is the appointment to North Central Housing Authority Board. Looking to fill that board, it's a regional housing authority that is at Cavalier County and I'm trying to remember the other county involved in that.
Eddie.
Eddie County. Is it Nelson, maybe? Or is they got another, I can't remember. But anyway, Adam Whitebun's been serving on that board. They meet monthly, and looking for a replacement for him. He would like to step down, correct? That would have him indicated, or would they like to?
Not quite yet. All they have is a four-member.
They have a four-member board, they're looking for a fifth, so they're looking for, and that one doesn't have to be a commission member or a commissioner. Could be a community member. So accepting nominations for that. Did he indicate a timeline for that?
No, it's, it's been vacant for quite a while.
But obviously, sooner the better would be good. Other than that, Sheriff Lang, you have anything for us tonight?
I'll just give you an update. I put up for the grants for the impaired riding seatbelt. I just got the letter back, we've been awarded overtime money for that. I think it was right around five six thousand dollars we got for overtime months of that grant, which will be for twenty twenty-four. So other than that, pretty much full staff. The ones who graduated from the academy on the twenty-fifth, so he'll be back on the road here shortly. Drug Task Force, last week took off another guy that brought in five hundred pills, about forty thousand other street value. So they're still plugging away and doing well. They had some vehicle issues, we had a few pump go out. One had Tyrode issue, and one went down last night. She was dead in the water, we got it fired back up, but no digital panel or anything. So I don't know if the brain box is going bad in it or what, so, so we're kind of down one car right now, but we're managing.
When you say dead in the water, it wasn't actually in the water.
Right, it was, it was.
Right, so just want to clarify that for those in YouTube land.
And we were busy, we unfortunately, we had an accident on the lake over the weekend resulted in a loss of one's life, so. Kind of compliment search and rescue and everybody that responded, they did everything they could.
Certainly thoughts and prayers to the individuals, friends and family, and want to thank you and your, and your responders for all those that helped out in the recovery operations on that. Certainly a tragic accident that happened, and everyone wants to see that, but certainly thank you and your responders for that, and search and rescue and everybody involved in that.
That's what I got right now.
Okay. Anybody have anything for Sheriff Lang? Appreciate you coming in. Visitors, crickets, any announcements?
Are you on the State Water or what?
I did get appointed to the State Water Commission.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Filling the remaining two years of Dick Johnson's term. Dick resigned in April, governor appointed, became, I don't know if it's official, but I'm on their website, so. Attended their meeting last Tuesday, was interviewed by the lieutenant governor and recognized at that meeting as being the Devil's Lake Basin representative on the State Water Commission. They go through and they set a lot of policy and they spend a lot of money, one hundred and ninety million dollars on that month, that meeting. Yeah. So majority of that went to the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, the pipeline from Missouri Riverdale, Ashtria, the part that the Garrison Conservancy, Lake Agassiz Water Authority and others are a part of, but it's a big one. So majority of where their cost and money went into that meeting. Yeah, I'm honored and very humbled to be part of the organization, so hope to be able to juggle all my hats and represent the county and the basin adequately on that and bringing our needs forward to the State Water Commission. Anything else? If not. If not, thank you all for attending. We'll be in adjourned.